Alright guys, I'm running pretty tight on time here. So, second floor, we're gonna go up and watch the city council meeting. I'm not gonna speak today. Just gonna check out the process. Observe and report. Like a secure attack. This is a pretty beautiful building, by the way. Good. Yes ma'am, yes sir. Uh, I have, which side is it on? Okay, so, thank you sir. Tap a one if you guys can hear me. I'm gonna go ahead and try and hook up my mic. Alright, I just hooked up my new microphoney. Can you still hear me? Hit that one again. Did I go dead? Oh, great, thank you sir. Looks like we got some ukuleles in here gonna do us a little show, so.
Good afternoon, everybody. It is 5:00 PM and ho, 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 it is merry Christmas time. And I'm officially calling the city council meeting to order for December 8th. I wanted to thank everybody for workshop this morning. Staff, thanks for being back. Council, good to see you again. And for all those in the community that may be watching this, council wishes you a very merry Christmas and glad to have you with us today. We do have a quorum here, but let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Collins.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis, she's here. Councilmember Schuster.
Here.
Councilmember Bouvier.
Here.
Councilmember Listowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rob.
Present.
Very good, thank you very much. We have the invocation, Pastor Abel Rivas. Pastor Rivas, glad to have you with us today, sir.
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for tonight, Lord. God, we thank you for the opportunity to allow us to gather here, God. Lord, just pray a blessing over the city of Galveston, God. Lord, I pray for just guidance and wisdom over any and all decisions being made here tonight, Lord. I just thank you for all that you're doing here, God, and I just, uh, we just thank you, Lord, for just your guidance and your wisdom here, Lord. Let's use your mighty name and pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for being here, sir. Have a pleasure, allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one and indivisible.
Council, are there any conflict of interest that you'd like to proclaim? Hearing no response, we are moving to item six, please, Janelle.
Item six, presentations for force of council, officer boards, and city manager. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.04, the city council may report on any of the following items.
Thank you very much. And to lead this section off, in celebration of Christmas, it's our honor to have the Galveston Ukulele Society is going to perform a few holiday songs for us this afternoon. The Ukulele Society is made up of local Galveston residents and directed by Robert Crown. They live by the motto, peace, love, and ukulele. And invite anyone interested to join the group, to come to their practices at the Maguire Dent Recreation Center. We're so glad to have you and welcome.
Hello.
We have two songs, "Feliz Navidad," "Feliz Navidad," "Feliz Navidad." Hope that you will join us in singing both of them. One, two, three, four.
Feliz Navidad, is the way to say on a bright, oh white Christmas day. That's the island green that takes you from the land where palm trees sway. Here we are, that Christmas will be green and bright. The sun will shine bright day in all the stars at night. Feliz Navidad is the wise way to say Merry Christmas to you. Feliz Navidad is the way to say on a bright, oh white Christmas day. That's the island green that takes you from the land where palm trees sway. Here we are, that Christmas will be green and bright. The sun will shine bright day in all the stars at night. Feliz Navidad is the wise way to say Merry Christmas, very, 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 Christmas to you.
Thank you. Please join us for "Feliz Navidad." One, two, three, four.
(Music) Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, where the fellow on your Felizidad. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, where the fellow on your Felizidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, where the fellow on your Felizidad. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, where the fellow on your Felizidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, where the fellow on your Felizidad.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Merry Christmas to you, thank you very much.
That was excellent, thank you all.
That was just wonderful.
We have another, if you want. Don't get us started.
This is the conclusion they had to start with.
Oh yeah, you're fine, thank you.
You know, and now it's, now that it's Christmas, wait a minute, I hear someone else coming to council that wants to say something.
Oh, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.
Come right here, Santa, I know you have a few words to say to council.
Hello, city council and mayor, thank you for accepting me in the chambers. I'm here to wish a very Merry Christmas to mayor, to the city council, city staff, and the entire city of Galveston. Besides the North Pole, Galveston is my second favorite place to be. And I bring the following wishes for the following individual. Councilmember Lewis, may you be blessed with peace and happiness, and your next year be filled with paved streets, a productive June keef, and no new pump station discussions. Councilmember Schuster, may you and your wife find increased happiness in your new home and always feel the love of those in District Two. Councilmember Towns, may your days be filled with peace and harmony, and you never have to answer another park board question. Councilmember Bouvier, may your days be filled with banana splits and chocolate sundaes, and your new parks board term be the cherry on top. Councilmember Listowski, may the words "no new revenue rate" dance like sugar plums in your dreams. Councilmember Rob, may sand continue to flow to the west, and the western part of the island receive all the love it deserves. Mayor Brown, may you be able to drive over a new Pelican Island Bridge sometime in your lifetime. And may the Parks Board of City sing "Humbaya" in harmony. And city manager Maxwell, may your experience increase revenue, below budget expenses, and Winston becomes an assistant city manager in charge of employee relations. And a final wish for each and every one of us is to be kind to everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Sam. Well, alright, on that note, right, very good. We are now moving through with our presentations. We have a certificate of recognition. Councilwoman Rob, would you like to read that?
I would like for friends from that chamber to come up and join me. And I'm turning this into a proclamation, so I'm gonna make it national Galveston Chamber Day on the fly, so we're gonna change this and give it to them. My favorite buds. So, I'd like to say I've been a member of the chamber since 1996, and I'm on, serve on the board, and there is no better group than Gets It Done on the Island. But whereas, we went through the version of Galveston and March is here, she was in our class too, yes, 1997. Whereas, the Galveston Regional Chamber of Commerce proudly announces that the U.S. Chamber of Commerce has awarded the organization a five-star accreditation designation, the highest level of designation in the chamber industry. And whereas, the Galveston Regional Chamber of Commerce is one of only 27 chambers in Texas to hold the five-star designation. Out of approximately 7,000 chambers nationwide, only 142 have earned this prestigious designation. And whereas, to receive this accreditation, a chamber must meet a minimum standard in their operations and programs, including areas of governance, government affairs, and technology. This extensive self-review can take six to nine months to complete. And whereas, it's a long one, and whereas, the work accomplished by the Galveston Regional Chamber has benefited our community through economic development, tourism, promotions, and community development programs. And whereas, the business community represented by the chamber has been a driving force in fostering enhanced educational opportunities, infrastructure improvements, leadership development, creation of jobs, and positive vision for the future. Whereas, this incredible honor reflects the 177-year-old mission that has stood the test of time to set values that do not waver, the people who share the passion and commitment around a common purpose of serving the business community. So we, and the mayor and the council, and I'm doing this on the fly, designate today, December 8th, 2022, as Galveston Regional Chamber of Commerce Day. And we ask all our citizens and businesses and tourists to join us in appreciating such a well-deserved organization. And whereas, I'm not gonna give just a few more so they can add this. Yes. In testimony, we're signed by the head of the mayor and the city secretary, Janelle Williams. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you all so much. It'll be our 178th anniversary February 2nd. It's been an honor to lead this organization. Next year will be my 20th year of promoting and advocating for business and community development, and it's an honor. This accreditation wouldn't have been achieved without those people way before us, and the people that are there now are board who's committed to that mission of promoting and advocating for business. So, thank you so much, it's truly an honor to receive this accreditation and the honor that you recognized. And we have a surprise for you. At our annual meeting, you will be awarded with the Economic Impact Award for your support, constant support of our chamber and advocacy, your commitment, you're at a rubbing heading shirt on the, in the committees, but you'll be awarded with this at the 178th Annual Meeting. The four tops, don't miss it, it's a salute to Motown, we hope to see all of you out there. It's gonna be a night to remember, but thank you so much and thank you all. But I'm not gonna take away from your board, but I really. Well, I just gotta slip it in because we don't have a lot of time, we're so busy. Thank you guys so much.
Well deserved, thank you very much.
Thank you. Everybody, come back. I didn't tell Robert he was gonna have to be. Thank you. And thank you. Thank you. And I was gonna, I'm gonna have this put on the fly, thank you so much. Thank you. Wow, all that and it.
There you go. Council, any other announcements or presentations that any council member would like to mention?
An announcement?
Yes ma'am.
I would. I would like to remind the citizens of Galveston.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. Hello to all, I would like to remind all citizens in Galveston for the SWMP meeting, the Stormwater Master Plan meeting that will be held December the 15th at 30th Street Electric Pump Station Building. All citizens are asked to please come out, your input is desired, identify risk, flooding risk areas, bring pictures if you have them, and again, it is December the 15th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Very good, any other announcements, council? Very good, let's move to item six B, please, Janelle.
Item six, city manager's report, investment report for quarter ended September 30th, 2022.
Mike?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, mayor. I am here to deliver the city's investment report for the quarter ended September 30th, 2022. This report is delivered in compliance with state law and city policy. We have a very conservative investment policy that is limited by state law, that emphasizes safety, liquidity, diversity, and yield. As you know, interest rates have been rising, and we saw some of the benefit of that in this quarter as compared to the June 30th quarter. We earned 2.55% for the quarter, that was our average weighted yield compared to 0.769% for the June 30 ending quarter. And although we had a smaller portfolio for the quarter ending at 129 million, which was 11 million less than the quarter before, we earned $552,000 net on the whole portfolio compared to 175,000, the quarter before.
Wonderful. Council having questions? Questions, council, from Mr. Lofton. Thank you, Mike, appreciate that, thank you so much. Let's move to item seven, please, Janelle.
Item seven, communications and petitions. Claims 2294 through 2298 were filed with the city secretary's office, and they're on the screen.
Okay. Thank you. We're now moving to public hearings, item 8A, please, Janelle.
Item 8A, conduct a public hearing on proposed 59th Street Water Storage Tank Community Development Block Grant mitigation, CDVG MIT program application.
Brian, are you introducing this? I didn't see Tess out here.
Tess is supposed to be here, but this is to discuss the project out on 59th.
Mike, get your microphone.
This is to discuss the project out on 59th Street, which is the new tank that Ms. Lewis asked questions about this morning. It's a great benefit to us, especially since we are losing some of the other older tanks that have been there for many, many, many years. Rob's here as well to pick up on it. There must be a tape delay.
No, just a little slower stuff. So tonight, we're just asking for you to open a public comment on this, and we'll take comments and get this one forward.
First of all, is there any questions for Mr. Bonneville?
Please don't ever wear that tie again, let us know, we went through that last year, we don't wanna do that ever again.
I was trying to be fast, I didn't.
No more freezes.
Just one thing before you open it up, mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just so the folks that are watching know, when you're at the end of the straw, like we are, it's imperative that we have good stores on the island for water. You know, one little blip in the system to another city is not a big deal, but when you're at the end of the line and that's all of our supply coming across, we've gotta be sustaining for some period of time, so these tanks are imperative to us, and thanks to the Public Works Group who's put this together, especially given the fact that we're using funding other than local funding to get these things down.
Correct, yeah. Thank you, Rob, good job on this. It is now 5:22 PM, I'm gonna open the public hearing on this particular item, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Janelle, did we receive any comments on this? Alright, very good, it's 5:22 PM, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this item, there is no action that's needed by council, but appreciated, Rob, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's move to item 8B, please, ma'am.
Item eight B, consider for approval an ordinance of the city of Galveston, Texas, creating a planned unit development overlay zoning district and a residential single-family arborum zoning district to construct a single-family residential development and commercial retail land use for a general-purpose store on property commonly known as Zero San Luis Pass Road FM 3005, and which is legally described as Lot 1, Lots 2 and 3 of Seabird Acres in the city and county of Galveston, Texas. Planning case number 22P067, making various findings and provisions related to the subject and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. We have Adrian Montevan from the planning department, Adrian.
Evening, council. This is a planned unit development request. We sent out 34 public notices, only one of those returned with no comment, in just case the applicant is proposing to construct 40 single-family residential units and a commercial retail general-purpose store, with the deviations listed on your report on page one and page two. Please go, please note the put details and development plan on pages two through four of your report. And at the November 8th, 2022, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request, with one additional condition listed in the report, and staff is also recommending approval with conditions listed in the report as 1, 3, 11. And now we have some photographs, this is the aerial image of the subject's site, zoning map as well. And the next slide, we have the site plan for those single-family units, and that concludes staff's hearing.
Thank you, Adrian. Council, is there any questions for Mr. Montevan?
Thank you, Adrian, thanks. This is the, where is the missing turnaround? One of the things in planning, we know. One of the things in planning, we normally require is a turnaround, right? The farm marshal, have any concerns about that?
No, so it would be for that, for that road in the back. And there'll be, there are no addition comments from the farm marshal pertaining to that.
Okay. Any further questions for Adrian? All right. It is 5:24 PM. I'm gonna open the public hearing on this item, 8B. Is anyone in the audience like to make a comment? There are no response. Janelle, anything in writing on that? All right. It's 8:525 PM. I'm gonna close the public hearing on item 8B. Bring that back to counsel for action. Counsel?
I'll make a motion for approval. I'll second that.
A motion for approval, councilman. Wasowski seconded by councilman Schuster. Any discussion, counsel? Please cast your votes. That is unanimous. Very good. Item 8C, please, Janelle.
8C, Consider For Approval An Ordinance Of The City Of Galveston, Texas Designating A Property Located At 3827 Avenue L As A Galveston Landmark. Property Is Legally Described As MBNR Survey Lot Portion Of Lot 1, Block 38 In The City And County Of Galveston, Texas. Requesting The Historic Preservation Office To Report The Property's Landmark Designation, The Official Public Records Of Real Property In Galveston County, The Tax Records Of The City Of Galveston And The Central Appraisal District, And The Official Zoning Maps Of The City Of Galveston, Texas. Designating The Site As A Historically Or Archaeological Significant Site In Need Of Tax Relief To Encourage Its Preservation. Planning Case Number 22P073. Making Various Findings And Provisions Related To The Subject.
Thank you very much. We have Catherine Gorman. Catherine?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's the Paganucci Market. It was built in 1922. It currently houses the Cordray's Ice Cream Shop. It's a nice example of a typical corner store. It surprises me we have over 100 local landmarks and not one of those of the corner stores. This will be our first example of that. It also has this unusual feature of a World War II call box. It's with that white structure underneath the canopy. It was used by soldiers who were on patrol during World War I to communicate to Port Rocket. The planning commission, landmark commission, and staff are all recommending approval.
Very good. Are there any questions from Ms. Gorman, counsel? Very good. It's 5:27 PM. I'm gonna open the public hearing on this item. 8C, is there anyone in the audience like to make a comment? Any comments you received, Janelle? Very good. It's 8:27 PM. I'm gonna close, excuse me, 5:27 PM. I'm gonna close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to counsel.
I'll second.
A motion for approval, councilwoman. Rob seconded by councilmember Lewis. Any discussion? Please cast your votes once we get that.
It's still locked in.
Seconded by. All right, let's, for the record, we had a motion, councilwoman Rob, for approval of item 8B. Seconded by, oh, it's up there. Councilwoman Lewis. Very good. Please cast your votes, counsel. It is unanimous. We got there. Thank you very much. We are now moving to public comments section. As everyone knows, or if you're new to the council, this gives you three minutes to make a comment to counsel on agenda items or non-agenda items. We, we do, unfortunately, because of the Open Meetings Act, we cannot respond to your comments, but we're always anxious to hear them. And if there is action that you feel needs to be taken, our city staff and council is making notes on this. So let's start with Marty Fluke. Marty?
Good evening. My name is Marty Fluke. I live at 3214 Ackert Drive, Galveston, Texas. I'm a citizen of Galveston, and I'm currently the chairman of the Galveston Island Park Board of Trustees. So my friend Bryson Frazier likes to quote lines from movies, but I prefer song lyrics. And my friend David Collins will recognize these since he's an X-Bee, say, but these come from Buffalo Springfield, a song for what it's worth. And the lyrics are written by a master lyricist named Stephen Stills, which most of you will know. It's a Vietnam War protest song. Since I'm a veteran of that area, I feel like I'm entitled to, to talk about it. So the song begins, "There's something happening here, but what it is ain't exactly clear." Right? Something's happening here, but what it is ain't exactly clear. So I saw confusion this morning surrounding the validity of the proposed ordinances, and it brought this to mind. You know, it's not exactly clear what we're doing. The third verse continues, "There are battle lines being drawn. Nobody's right if everybody's wrong." Right? So I continue to wonder, does this sound like our current situation? Everybody's wrong and nobody's right? I'm asking, why aren't we drawing battle lines here between the park board and the city? And why aren't we, why don't we stop focusing internally and start focusing on the residents, the tourists, our partners out here that you see that are driving the economy and are the economic engine that drive this city forward and that fuel the city's economy? And by the city attorney's own admission this morning, the ordinances don't fix the legality of the problems. And so, rather he states, we need a contractor and interlocal to solve the legality of the problem that is the centerpiece of this discussion. So with respect, my question is, why would this council pass ordinances and add to the city's bureaucracy when they admittedly do not solve the purported problem? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty.
Appreciate it.
Bill Keys. Hi, Bill. Hey, Mr. Mayor, how are you doing today?
Counsel, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Bill Keys. I live at 140125th Street, just down the road from here. I am confused about why we're talking about what we are with the park board. It's been running the way it has for 14 years. It's been doing a fine job. I think everybody in the council has admitted it's been doing a fine job. And all of a sudden, a councilman digs into the law and discovers something that he doesn't like. And he goes to the city attorney, and they come up with a reason why the park board isn't working the way it should be working. And they say it's unlawful, and we need to follow the law. The law is something that is never very precise. I know that because I used to make laws. The law is based on interpretations. And so far, I've heard four interpretations. One supporting what the city's about to do and three opposing what the city's about to do. I think time is important that the city recognize that there is not unanimity here in this issue. And I'm also confused about leadership role. For some time now, I have been watching as a city attorney assess policy in the city. And I urge all of y'all to think deeply about that. You are the elected people representing Galveston. It is your responsibility to make policy. And you're about to make policy based on one man's opinion. I don't think that's a very appropriate way of using your power. And I also want to address another issue that I'm confused about is why this issue came to the public without private investigations and private discussions. Like too many things in this country today, issues are broadcast in news media and the social media, and it gets distorted, and people don't know what to think. I wonder why leadership didn't come together with the park board leadership and say, "We think we might have a problem. Why can't we work together?" It's high time, in my opinion, to echo something Marty just said. It's something that councilman Sharon, as you said in the last meeting. It's time for us to work together. It's time for us to pull together and not fuss with each other. It's a time to unite and move forward in the best interest of the people of Galveston and not just a few. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Maureen Patton.
Maureen Patton, 7666 Chantilly Circle, Galveston resident. As a former park board trustee member, I always appreciated our collaboration with city council through our interlocal contacts, contracts. It has saddened me to see that in the past several years, we've gotten away from working together through contracts to now imposing ordinances without proper discourse between the two entities. I'm asking council to put themselves in the shoes of the trustees. They are appointed by you. They serve alongside of one of you on the board. They provide their full budgets, capital improvement plans, and audits. Many of you have gone on the record to say that this is about legal compliance and that outside of that, the park board does a great job. These ordinances do not reflect that statement. I'm asking you today if the ordinances presented are truly the will of the city council do these ordinances that don't provide solutions and in fact require an additional contract to fund the park board past March 31st. Represent your values. As a former trustee, I know how much time and effort goes into planning and executing the park board budget. I can't imagine that only being funded through March 31st will not significantly impact their operations. As a businesswoman, these ordinances do not appear to be thought through thoroughly, and they require significant additional work to be made compliant by your own definition. From my viewpoint, it's a Band-Aid approach to issues that require major surgery. Please do not hastily vote on two ordinances. Wait to develop a contract that ensures funding for the park board past three months and addresses your original compliance concerns. If the money being deposited in the park board accounts is truly the problem, then address that. But don't create an ordinance just to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Joyce Calver McLean, Mrs. Claus.
AKA Mrs. Claus.
AKA.
Couldn't have gotten dressed without me. My name is Joyce Calver McLean. I live at 1010 Winnie Street in Galveston, Texas, and I am a former park board chair. City staff has asserted that ordinances are necessary to bring the city and park board into compliance in the way it deposits hotel occupancy tax. Two ordinances by the city's attorney's own admission do not accomplish that goal, as noted in a memo attached to the two ordinances. Furthermore, the two ordinance go far beyond their perceived budget and depository compliance and threaten to defund the park board through a complex approval process restricting funds with no current plan to fund the park board again past March 31st of 2023. These requirements are legally unfounded and unprecedented. As I said, as a former park board chair and someone who lived through a similar attempt by the city to reappropriate highly restricted funds, I can see this for what it is. This is not about legal tax code compliance. If it was, an interlocal agreement would satisfy that issue. Two entities have been governed by contract for over 60 years. The park board has never shied away from finding legal ways to help the city find funding. In the 2019 interlocal agreement, the park board agreed to an annual revenue share to the city of Galveston amounting $300,000. The park board also took over the short-term rental registration at the city's request and as well as the collection of hotel occupancy tax. That actually cost the park board a little over $200,000 a year. All the answers about compliance lie in Section 351.05, for eligible coastal communities in the Texas State Tax Code, which states that it prevails over any conflicting provision in the charter. Galveston is an eligible coastal municipality. The city attorney continues to reference 351.101, even though it is preempted by 351.105. Therefore, as an eligible coastal municipality and in keeping with Chapter 306, the Galveston Park Board requires no further authorization to expend hotel occupancy tax. I'm asking you, not only as a former park board member, but as a voting citizen, not to hastily vote on two ordinances that have nothing to do with the compliance you are seeking and aren't even necessary to achieve it. I'm asking you to recognize the park board as the separate entity that it is. It was enacted in a special act of the Texas State Legislature and memorialized in the tax code as an eligible coastal municipality, which incidentally was voted by the citizens of Galveston, not the city council.
Thank you, Joyce. Jay Bangle.
Jay Bangle, 2415 Avenue N. And I came here in 1991 to complain to your predecessors about the park board of trustees. They were shutting down the strand too early for whatever that was, Dickens or... Ann Robert Lynch responded by asking me to serve on the park board, and I did. I spent three years there. At the end of each year, we gave the excess funds to you. Oh, and I served with Marilyn, Marilyn Schwartz. So about two to three times a month, I had lunch with Babe. And he taught me the history of Galveston beaches. And I do remember when I first moved to Houston, my former in-laws said, "Don't you take those kids down there. It's filthy. It's dangerous." By golly, it was. Babe Schwartz fixed that by very important legislation at the state level. And Babe explained to me, "In fixing it, the dire need to separate the funds from you. You have a conflict of interest. You take an oath to the city of Galveston. When I served on the park board, I took an oath to the park board of trustees." And the only other thing that Babe impressed upon me heavily was the importance financially to the city of Galveston. Five million people live within a 50-mile radius, and half that radius is underwater, and you are the closest saltwater. And your conflict is, the only way in your mind that you can serve your city is to get reelected. And the only way you can get reelected is to take any available money and get what your constituents want. Babe knew that, and that's why he separated the park board money from you. You'll say, "Oh, well, we won't spend it," but you have to. How are you gonna get reelected without giving your constituents what they want? How are you gonna save the beaches without taking care of the parks? How are you going to save the beaches without taking care of the park board? It's like me, I have a little store. If I don't take care of my store, I don't make any money. If you don't take care of the beaches, Galveston's going to lose money, jobs, businesses. The beaches, like Babe said, and you named the beach after him. But now you're going to denigrate him by taking away his legacy because you guys want the money to buy your votes back. It's disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment at the public comment section here?
Spencer.
Come right ahead, Spencer.
Eddie, can you give an answer to the meeting? Spencer Priest, 29 Windmont Drive here in Galveston. Excuse me, a current trustee and a former chair of the park board. I just wanted to talk today about what many of us do, item agenda, item 10C, and why the park board should remain separate from the city of Galveston. As a resident, I appreciate that our island is a destination and we have so much to offer our residents and our tourists. The park board works to make sure the vision always has the residents in mind. So as a reminder, trustees are all residents. I know you hear this, but think about it. We're the ones that actually vote for each of you in our districts. We support you. If we don't agree with something, we don't go out and, you know, ask your neighbor or anything. We continue to work out and we work through this. You know, that's what I'm asking for city council to do with the park board. If there's some legal issue that's out there, let's sit down and hash it out. I was part of the interlocal agreement that's currently in place with some of the city council that's in place and city staff that's still working under you. If there was an issue, why didn't we identify it in those awful negotiations that we went through? They were tedious. They were long. It was a third full-time job for me when I did it, and I appreciate it. I'll do it for the city of Galveston or a place I moved, decided to move because I was a tourist at one time. You know, I just want to make it clear, neither organization is working well together. This is not us against them. This is a plea to have us work together. We've got to get these joint meetings back. The last two years, we have not sat in front of each other and had any good discussions. The vision, the vision is there. We have master plans. We talked about it. We've got to get those back in place. But for you to write an ordinance and just take the power of the park board away, because that's basically what we're doing, it's not going to improve anything. It's not going to improve the quality of life for our residents. And then it begs the question, what is the purpose of the trustee? You know, do all the trustees just resign after this vote comes in? I see Collins nodding his head yes. So we know where, we know what he wants, the residents of Galveston, apparently. But I asked the other city council members to please take a real hard look at this. You know, it's an ordinance. We need interlocals and contracts. Something isn't working right, let's sit down and hash it out. I guess this morning, I missed it, I was in meetings, but, you know, you all talked about the direction you had given staff to find additional revenue streams. Nobody found additional revenue streams. You're taking a current revenue stream. So it's not benefiting the city of Galveston. All right. I thank you all for your time and have a good night.
Thank you, Spencer. Very good. Anyone else in the audience like to make a comment on this? Any public comment? We have five written comments, Janelle.
Now I have six.
We have six. They just came in.
Okay, the first one is from Will Wright. The subject is park board ordinances. The proposed ordinances do not give enough detailed processes on the long-range impact these changes will have. They are short-term changes that will have a massive long-term impact. They also don't adequately address many of the council's compliance concerns nor numerous concerns for park board staff and operations. I urge the council to work with park board to agree on an updated interlocal agreement that can serve as the contract between our entities as outlined in the proposed ordinances. Next is from Melissa Dranberger, and the subject is short-term rental registration. I would like more information on the 400% increase on the rental registration. We already pay HOT. Did you reduce those? I'm sure you did not. Please explain what this money is used for. Does it benefit me, a homeowner who rents property and already pays fees and HOT? This seems to have been voted on, but as a homeowner, I did not receive any info on these issues. This is really abusing those who support Galveston. Next is from Nicholas Ellis, and the subject is new short-term rental registration fees. I was just notified via email that my short-term rental fee was increased from 50 to 250 arbitrarily without any sort of public vote or comment period. Happy holidays. Would love to see a breakdown of what this money is going toward, why the fee needed to be five times adjusted one year after its creation, and if the demonization of short-term rental owners will ever stop, especially locals that operate a small handful of units. For now, I'll be sure to vote for a different council member next time. Next is from Jennifer Yankee. The subject is pole barn in neighbor's backyard. I'm deeply disheartened that my neighbor was permitted by the city to put a metal pole barn in his backyard at 2810 Avenue N and a half. This greatly reduces my property value as it has the appearance of a commercial building in a neighborhood with historic properties. I do not understand how the structure does not violate the ordinance, which states that structures must be similar in character as adjacent residential properties, nor another ordinance requiring a year-round landscaping barrier. Next is from Kevin McCracken. The subject is trash. We spend a lot of money keeping the beaches clean, and they look really good, but the rest of the island is filled with trash, mainly from the homeless people who don't give a damn about themselves, much less the environment. So my issue as a resident who picks up trash wherever I go, my issue is why aren't you requiring businesses to have trash receptacles outside of their business? And why aren't you enforcing these businesses to keep their property clean? Every business has trash everywhere. And the last one is from Polly Guido, and the subject is hotel occupancy tax. Please remember that in the 1970s, local hotelers asked Senator Babe Schwartz to tax their industry so that the funds raised thereby could be used to promote the island and grow the overall tourist industry. When Schwartz introduced the enabling legislation in the state, in the Texas Senate, he was empathetic that the tourist industry itself was asking to be taxed. The industry would never have supported the tax had they believed it would ever be used for any other purpose than promoting the island. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Janelle. Appreciate that. We're now moving to item 10, ordinances not requiring public hearings. 10A, please, Janelle.
10A, consider for approval an ordinance of the city of Galveston, Texas, approving the amended and restated certificate of formation of the Galveston Island Redevelopment Authority, directing the filing of the same with the Office of the Texas Secretary of State, providing for findings of fact and for an effective date.
Very good. Thank you. This is legal. Don, did you want to make any comments on that? Excuse me? On 10A, Don. It's on the RDA merger.
No, the council noted to, uh, in this composition, the RDA reduced ago, and this is the latest attempt to satisfy.
All right. We talked about this a little bit in the workshop on that. I'm going to make a motion for approval of item 10A. Is there a second? Oh, sorry. Have a second by Councilman Schuster. Is there any discussion on that? Please cast your votes, please. That is unanimously approved. Item 10B, please, Janelle.
10B, an ordinance of the city of Galveston, Texas, amending the total operating budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, by adjusting various budget accounts in the amount of $1,318,000 to properly record expenditures, including $862,000 transferred from one department to another without increasing the general fund budget in total, and $456,000 in special fund costs. Such costs resulted from increase in garage expenditures related to fuel parts and repair costs, loss of state grants for emergency management reimbursements, reallocation of personnel to the emergency management department, increase in local match for island transit, increase in taxation fees, additional funding for separation payouts for city departures, and various other budget variations, including authority to transfer police budget underrun to the technology improvement fund, authority to transfer the budget underrun to the information technology operating budget, to the technology improvement fund, and authority to transfer excess general fund balance to the health insurance fund to fund the retiree healthcare liability, making various findings and provisions related to the subject and providing for an effective date.
We do need to reduce these captions. Mike, go right ahead, sir.
As council votes, we have a system of quarterly reports that we file. One is actually filed as a part of the proposed budget each year for the current year. In the other three quarters, there's a report filed that does projections through the end of the year. This is only our second amendment this year. The first amendment occurred at the start of 2022 to make adjustments that arose from the year-end process where particularly this year, we're going to have the same thing in the first quarter, where vehicles were not delivered and funds needed to be carried over and reallocated to cover, cover that cost. The list of things that you heard is a really small list of items compared to what was in the proposed budget in October of '21. And the most significant thing in here I will point to, and this came up in the workshop this morning, a couple of significant things as far as transfers are concerned. This is not budget authority. This is actually transfer of cash. We are taking, are proposing to take with council's approval, the $695,000 underrun for the police department for this year's, the 2022 budget, and set that aside for their records management system that is going to have to be replaced in the next 18 to 24 months. We did this last year. We have 1.3 million set aside with this plug of money that hopefully will approve. And that puts us in the ballpark of what that project is, is likely to cross. The other thing that we're doing is taking the excess in fund balance after these other adjustments that I've mentioned and moving it to the health benefits fund to address what last year was a, excuse me, was a $14 million liability for retiree healthcare. We're proposing to put 4.6 million into the health benefits trust fund to address that. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Council, any questions for Mr. Lofton? I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I'd make a motion for approval.
Motion for approval of item 10B by Councilman Mustowski, seconded by Councilman Collins. Any discussion on that, council? Please, council votes. That is unanimously approved. Item 10C, please, Janelle.
10C, consider for approval an ordinance of the city of Galveston, Texas, related to the distribution of hotel occupancy taxes to the Galveston Park Board of Trustees, providing provisional approval of the park board's budget for the use of HOT funds distributed by the city to the park board, providing for the delivery of HOT funds to the park board by the city, providing for the submission of quarterly reports by the park board to the city detailing its use of HOT funds, providing for the continued collection of HOT tax by the, by the park board until September 30th, 2023, directing staff to draft a contract for delivery of HOT to the park board for the period beginning April 1st through September 30th, 2023, providing for the submission of HOT budget requests by the park board for the fiscal years beginning October 1st, 2023, and making various findings and provisions related to the subject.
Very good. This is an item that was deferred from two meetings ago to this meeting here. It is an item that we discussed at length this morning in our workshop. We made some changes to the ordinance that was presented to us originally in this item. And I think, Donna, you have passed these out to council. Council, this is item 10C, and the changes that council wanted to have in there are highlighted. We have removed a section and we have added some, an additional wording to Section 3 coming up here. So that is where we are at this point. Donna or Don, do you want to say anything about this before we open this discussion?
I've said so much already.
Enough said.
It's necessary to come into lines with the Texas statute.
All right. Very good. I'm going to bring this back for council. Let's, I'm going to entertain a motion for us to start our discussions from on this. Is there any motion?
I would move approval. Second, then.
We have a motion for approval of this item 10C, seconded by, a motion by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Schuster. And of course, David, that is the amended version that we have proposed.
Yes.
That is.
I move approval, the amended version. That was, and the council had those two amendments. One, whereas this was removed, and the line added to Section 3.
All right. Very good. We have a motion for approval and second. Let's open this up for discussion. Council members, any, any comments? Councilman Mustowski.
So I see there's been some text amendment here to Section 3, but in our workshop, that's not where I wanted to see that, that text at. It was in Section 5 where I wanted to see the text.
The same text, Don.
I mean, that text would be okay, I guess. I mean, I would, you know, my personal opinion would be that it would say, resolved by calculations by the city manager and subject to this decision by city council whose determination shall be final.
Are you requesting amendment to the motion on that, sir?
Yes.
All right, we have a...
That's, that's one, one thing. I've got a couple of questions, too.
All right. Let's, first of all, did you have other amendments, John?
Not so much amendments, just more questions.
More questions. Let's, let's move with amendment first. We have a recommendation.
I would have no trouble with moving that language to Section 5.
All right, council.
The comments that are currently related to the budget and the budget information was in Section 3, but it, you feel that you would like the same line in Section 2.
Well, I, I think the question this morning, Councilman Mustowski's questions, I think we'll take it. The question this morning was, was, I think, more directed towards Section 5. So if we could, if we can move that, that line to Section 5. You know, the concern being that, that council have final approval of these recalculations. Now, we looked at the budget officer to bring these things to us, but, and then they have to be voted on by council in either case, but I have absolutely no problem with adding that line to that.
All right, so...
Same verbiage, just in Section 5.
So for clarity, any change to the budget should be brought to council, which is what we discussed this morning.
Which is, is that not currently what?
Absolutely. It's a law, actually.
Let's clarify that.
All right, let's, let's, before we move on, I want to make sure that we have the amendment correct. Would you read Section 5 as you interpret what our, I want to make sure that meets Councilman Mustowski's approval.
Section 5 has been changed, so if we...
Could you move your microphone down, please?
Let me, let me read to you what I would like Section 5 to say.
Okay.
Where it says, and we're going to pick up here at the bottom here, calculations by the city manager and subject to a decision by city council whose determination shall be final.
Now, if you do that, I think, I kind of think that we need to leave that line and suggest it's Section 3.
I mean, I, no problem with that either, but, but it already has, such approvals must be attained from city council by separate application. I mean, I'm fine with leaving that language to section three too. My, my, my discussion this morning was about section five.
I have, I have no trouble with what Councilman Mustowski just said. Do you, you understand that?
And, and that.
Except that, in fourteen days, if Mike Lofton and Bryson do not agree how much money is to be transferred, it has to come back to city council, and they're continuing to hold the money in the meantime. Is that correct?
That's correct. I, I mean, I don't see how you would do it any other way with such a big discrepancy in exhibit A that we saw this morning.
Well, if I may, we can play hide the hot tax for as long as they want to. So at some point, we do need to make the decision, and, and, and we, we look for Mr. Lofton and Mr. Rancho to, to bring us those figures. I, I don't want to have a debate about, you know, which, which of these line items in, in exhibit A is valid and which is not. I mean, I, it's not our expertise.
Well, not only that, I just want to make a comment here because the budget was presented by the park board. They presented their budget in CIP in between the workshop and tonight. I went home, I pulled out their budget, I reread it, and the numbers were consistent in what was in exhibit A. Then all of a sudden today, Mr. Bryson even admitted he would have had numbers to us a couple of weeks ago, but he was told not to. They produced a completely different budget that wasn't consistent with anything they had produced in the past three months. And to me, that's something I'm very concerned about because regardless of what anyone says, this is the people's money. It isn't our money, it isn't the park board's money, it's the people's money. And, you know, I, I don't, I, I support us moving forward with this, I would accept the language, but exhibit A being different was different than anything they presented to us, and I do take issue with that. Because you can't all of a sudden come in one day and say, I changed the numbers, this isn't what we have. And that's what they did. If you went back and read everything they have presented to us, and even looked at their website, their website had the numbers that were consistent to what was in exhibit A, until we get a new document today, which makes me very uncomfortable.
Yeah. This is a one-time thing. And, you know, so, so John, agreeing with you here, I, maybe I'm premature in agreeing with you on that, that this needs to be changed. I, I think that the city manager needs to make the final determination on this. The fir- future changes to the budget, yes, those should all come to city council. But this, but this rereading, this, this line item is not about the budget. This line item is about the funds to be retained, the hundred and twelve days, hundred whatever that calculation is, that better be retained. That's, and, and, and.
It's operational.
That's, that is absolutely operational. So I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to withdraw my agreement with you on this. I, 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 I think we need to move forward with this language. I like it, it's actually clear that we know amendment to the approved park board budget without prior city council review. That's, that's different than asking which of the funds can be, should be transferred. I mean, that's, they, 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 you know, the, the argument seems, the, the beginning argument is none, and now it's several million dollars different from what was in their, you know, budget and what was in the, uh, attachment I, exhibit A.
Well, the attachment I, the, the, the difference in that is that, uh, Bryson came back and addressed hot only, and that's why the difference is there.
You, you can say that, but when you, when you look at that difference, some of that is hot. You can't say half of what CBP does isn't hot. You can't say, you know, refund money to FEMA and when they give it back, it's not hot anymore.
And, and we need to determine first of all, how, how pertinent is, uh, exhibit A to this motion? Not, not at all, actually, because that number.
Mr. Lofton and Bryson, you both expressed your confidence in them to come up with the money. If they're a few bucks short, I mean, Brian just makes a decision and on we go.
Yeah, what we saw this morning wasn't just a few bucks. Sorry?
What was that?
What we saw this morning was not just a few bucks. Millions of dollars of difference there.
Well, it was, and it's millions of dollars difference that suddenly appeared when, when the language of this, this, this ordinance came out. As, you know, I refer to it as hide the hot tax, and I think that's exactly what's happening here. We're, we're, they're going back and claiming things that are clearly hot, aren't hot. I mean, that, everything CBP does is, is hotel tax, just everything. And they, they can't just imagine doing some of it not hotel tax. So I think this needs to be passed as, as is, I'm, I'm, as it was presented by Dick this afternoon.
But Sharon.
I just want to share that what I recall this morning, that we gave instructions for them to add that line in section three. That is what I recall from the meeting. And I raised a question, exactly what was the point, what were we trying to say in section five? And I never got clarity on that. So now, we're saying that we want the same statement in section five.
No, not the same statement. I, I, I give the language here basically subject to the, to the decision by city council. I mean, this is public money, this is, this is, I, I think that, that needs to come to us, and, and we need to have the final say on that.
And I'm just asking the question. I need clarification. Are you saying that you want to add approval by city council, count, by calculation by the city manager and city council? That's what you're saying in here? Section five?
Yes.
Okay, I just need to know clarification.
My only concern, I defer to the attorney, is that this is an operational budget issue, just like our own budget? That's not how we would handle our own budget, and I do not want to solve one legal problem and create another one to make things politically right. So I defer to the attorney on this.
And, and the reason why I would have this in this, in this paragraph here is because we haven't really approved a budget. And so thi- this does give some type of process to us that we see what's going on over there, and we have this, the final plan on that. You, you are basing this off a budget that we have not approved, right?
Did you not give conditional approval to their current budget?
That is next, sir.
That's next?
Actually, I think we have given conditional approval.
I thought so too, or else they couldn't be spending money.
I mean, in Bass, all the funds are coagulated, so the seven A had to be extrapolated from the park board budget.
And I'm not sure it's counsel's job to be determining what belongs in exhibit A and what doesn't. And that's what, that's what this is going to be down to doing, and that's not our job. And that's not strictly an operational issue. That's what's. Mr. Lofton do the man, Mr. Rancho will certify to us if that's true and correct. But that's, that, and just as we said this morning, that's not what this, that, that's an addendum. But it's not.
He is the budget officer.
He is the city's budget officer, constitutionally.
I'm not concerned about the differences in exhibit A. That's an operational issue. We're going to work those things out with Mr. Lofton and, and Bryson Frazier. I think we need to, in my mind, looking at the intent of the ordinance that we have before us, I do see John Paul's, uh, concerns though about this. Granted, this is an operational issue, uh, but this is a very important, uh, decision, and a lot of people are concerned about things where I feel counsel should step in and take a role if that, uh, if there's a difference of decision on what type of funding need to be allocated this first time around. Now, what, what you're trying to do, John, is put language into that to address that where this comes to counsel. Is that right, sir?
Yes, if there's a dispute over the calculator.
And, and that, that then forestals the implementation of this altogether. Like I said, we can do this, we can, that'll, that'll defer it to the end of January, then there's another dispute, it'll defer it to the February meeting. If you'd allow me, mayor, to restate my motion.
Yes, sir.
I move approval of item ten C as written and presented to counsel this afternoon.
Is there a second? I have a, a second by William Schuster on that. Yes, Mike.
So, uh, it was stated in the workshop this morning, um, that the park board is a contractor to the city. And we are writing an ordinance to a contractor to have them abide by an ordinance, which I think that should be a contract, not an ordinance, between a contractor and the city. So I don't feel that this is even legal at the moment.
And, and I may, I, I understand your point, but, but by their attorney's own admission, for hot tax purposes, they're an agent of the city, so we can direct them to take action.
It was, it was stated that they were a contractor. That's why they're able to take the money into their accounts. If they're not, and they're an agent, then they can't put that money in their account. It has to stay in the city depository.
That's when we, that's when we pay out the money to them. That's true. They, we, we operate under a contract, but their collecting and holding hotel tax on our behalf makes them an agent of the city. And that's what this, that's what this paragraph.
No, you're, you're talking in circles now.
Well, that's what this, this paragraph referred, is, is, is talking about. If I may shed some light on it. Cheryl Johnson acts as an agent in the city when she collects our taxes. She transfers it to the city upon collection. The city often does interlocal agreements with the county for performance of roadwork and things. The city then, through a contract process, sends them money to perform those duties. This is absolutely no different between two governmental entities.
So we write ordinances to the county?
We have in the past, yes. It just depends on the type of work we're doing and what's happening. But the ordinance is relation, is in relation to the collection of the hot tax. It's not in relation to the operational agreement for the work to be performed.
Should we be doing this item D first?
Well, logically, the flow is we do the collection contract, and then we do the distribution contract.
Why would you say we're doing that? So we have item D first, but I think that would resolve this question.
Well, we have ten B, uh, we have a motion on the floor right now, Councilman Collins, and seconded by Councilman, uh, Councilman Schuster. Uh, any further discussion on that? Now, if this motion does not pass in some, for some reason, we can entertain another motion. Is that correct, Don, on this?
Not a motion, sir. Penny, Penny, sir.
All right. Uh, John, I'd like, if you don't mind, could you state again what you would like to have in there? If this was something that, uh, you said you would like to add one more thing to section five?
I, I would just like to see if any dispute over the calculations of monetary amounts set forth in this section shall be, uh, resolved by calculation, by calculation by the city manager and deter, and subject to a decision by city council, whose, whose determination shall be final.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion in that?
The motion is presented.
Is presented. Yes. If it fails, we can entertain another motion on that. All those, and please, Counselor Rose. It passes. Uh, four to three. All right, very good. We are moving item to item ten C. Excuse me, ten D.
Ten D. Consider for approval an ordinance of the city of Galveston, Texas relating to the custody of hotel occupancy taxes, hot tax, directly to Galveston Park Board of Trustees to deliver all hot tax collectives and/or help by the park board to the city of Galveston, providing for the twice monthly delivery by the park board to future hot tax collection to the city, providing for the deposit of such hot funds received from the park board into the city depository, allowing for the retention of a sufficient amount of operational and maintenance hot fund reserves by the park board, making various findings and provisions related to the subject.
Very good. Uh, Don, this is another deferral from two meetings ago. Any comments on this, Don, or Donna?
The, uh, this staff has made changes, requesting this form of payment.
I'd say that again, Don.
How we set up and distributed.
Correct, and we had some, uh, updated, uh, ordinance that was distributed on ten D. And you read the right caption on that. Thank you, Janelle. We've had some changes to that also, uh, that are in here, uh, that we discussed at our, at our meeting there. Very good. I'm going to make a motion for approval of ten D. All right, is there any discussion, counsel?
I would comment that this is where A, the amendment, exhibit A matters, is, is what is retained and what is.
Okay. Any further discussion?
You know, there was so much discussion here tonight about, um, why are we doing this by ordinance? This is something that's never been done. Well, I served on the park board, and I served on the council from twelve to fourteen, and it was done exactly this way. This didn't change until two thousand and fifteen. How that happened, no one's been able to answer. But this ordinance is to make sure that doesn't happen again. It's the extra protection. It doesn't change anything else. And statements that this is the way it's happened for sixty years, that's not true. Um, I, when I was in the city's finance committee, uh, Eddie Welsh, he served on the park board in two thousand and five to two thousand and six or eleven, and he's like, this is exactly how it happened. So all this discussion about this is something new, it's this, it's that, it, that simply isn't true.
Mayor. Yeah, and I want to make a comment too. I, I served on the park board for goodness, almost eight years, maybe even longer, and a portion of that is their chair, chairman there. Uh, there's no one that appreciates what the park board does more than I do, I think. Uh, and they do an exceptional job in this city. The way I looked at this here, if this, if voting for this depository, uh, ordinance would undermine what the park board can do in any way, I would be concerned of that. And truthfully believe it does not. It's an accounting change that we are putting and coming into compliance with law, in my mind, and it's an accounting change. And I think the park board will be able to move forward and function just as they have in the past. We just have this now following a procedure that is more legally supported.
I just want to bring clarity to something too. When I first came to the city in two thousand and eleven, uh, when we started talking about funding, it blew my mind that when the city funds and adopts budgets, they do it through ordinance. Coming from the county, we didn't do ordinances. We, you know, council, commissioner's court approved it, and we had a budget. Um, and I just want to bring clarity when people ask why we do this by ordinance. That's how the city funds and acts is through its ordinances. It's, it's different than what I was used to, but of course, eleven years, twelve years later, I've gotten used to it now. But that is how the city operates, and they, they, they reduce things to ordinance in order to make it, make it appropriate. That's correct.
And, and I would say too that, uh, if we didn't have a charter requirement requiring this, or there wasn't tax law that is requiring this, and we were structuring this for the first time, I would structure that where this money comes to the city depository. Makes sense. This is city tax money that's coming in, and this needs to be into the city depository and allocated appropriately. And I would say, as the park board members may have saw. And I would say, as the park board members may have saw this this morning in the workshop, this money, if there's excess monies, this is going to be delineated in the city's account in those monies, and we changed some wording in this depository ordinance so that those monies can only be used for what those monies were originally intended to be used for. And that protects the use of those monies. So, saying that, let's cast your votes, please, council.
I have a question.
Excuse me, John.
David, you mentioned that this is where Exhibit A comes into play, but that number in Exhibit A is determined from a previous ordinance.
And I don't know why this isn't a single ordinance. I honestly don't. I'm not familiar. But I mean, this refers to what is held by the park board, right? The deposit minus this. That Exhibit A relates to what is retained. And that's actually the number that matters right now.
But that number is resolved in the previous ordinance.
And both of those things, here in a minute, will both be law, and yeah, that'll be resolved by the city manager and the city finance director.
All right. Do you have, I don't know if you're overpriced, just said that you shouldn't have mentioned it. Please cast your votes, council. It is unanimous but for Councilman LaStaski and Bouvier. What's not unanimous? Sorry. Five, four, and two, yes. All right. Let's move, get my agenda back here. Very good. Let's move to item 11 now, please, Janelle.
Item 11, consent items. The following items shall be considered for action as a whole unless one or more council members objects. The city manager is authorized to execute all necessary documents upon final approval by the city attorney, and we'll have the consent items on the screen shortly.
And council, is there any council member? I would like to pull any item to be decided individually. I'd like to pull item 11A, if we could, please. And is there any others that council members would like to pull?
I do not want to pull, but I want to comment on item J, that we're not going to leave Menard Park. I'd like to thank Marsha Rappaport and Tom Schwing for their donation. I think it's going to be a very popular attraction.
Very much. I'm on that as well. Just want to thank Marsha. We talked about this. We've seen, we've talked about it on our Family, Children, and Youth Board, and I think it's great addition to Menard Park. I said at last meeting, but Menard Park keeps growing. As a kid, there was nothing there but a tennis court, and now there's all kinds of stuff to do there. And thank you, the unofficial mayor of Galveston, Tom Schwing, for that.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I'm going to make a, well, first of all, let's, I'm going to make a motion for approval of the consent items from 11B, as in boy, all the way to 11P, as in Paul. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second for that. Any discussion? Please cast your vote on that. I'm sorry.
Wait for your answer. For your information, Marie, for 11B through P, Mr. Paul, Secretary of Transit.
And that is unanimous. On 11A, I would like to make a motion to approve the legislative agenda, but removing the item that is titled Reach Public Retirement System Goes Through Cooperative Best Practices. Is there a second? Okay. Make a motion for approval of 11A, but removing the Reach Public Retirement System Goes Through Cooperative Best Practices item.
I would second.
And a second by Councilman Collins. Very good. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
I would like to take a minute and thank Marsha since I was out. And again, we are both graduates, along with Gina of Leadership Ninety-seven. So, thank you, Marsha. That was like such a wonderful gift.
Thank you.
Very nice, Marsha. Glad to have you here, Marsha. Yeah, I need to see more of you.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Very good. Let's move to item 12A, please.
12A, discuss and consider accepting the resignation from City Councilmember District Two, Representative William Schuster.
I was just thinking that.
Yeah, I knew that we don't.
It's a democratic process, but.
Yes.
No, no, go for it, ma'am.
No, go right here, please.
Yeah, I guess if you got the news, I'm moving out of the district, so be resigning in May after the next election officially. I just want to thank all y'all. I've enjoyed it the last two years, city staff. Thank y'all. Living in Galveston my whole life, this is probably the most fulfilling thing I've ever done, living on the island. I enjoy it. It's fun. Can't get enough of it, actually. I'm kind of a little obsessed with it, actually, at times. And I love Galveston to death. It's a great place to live, plan on raising my family here, and I just want to thank everybody for their support. Kylie, thank you for letting me do this because I've always got to get the green light with her, and, well, I appreciate everything. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate all your service. William, we're going to miss your research component that you bring to council. Very good. I'm going to make a motion for approval and acceptance of the resignation of Councilman Schuster.
I'll second. But people should know you'll be with us through the mail election, so.
Guess I'll vote yes.
That is negative, William. That did not pass. Oh, excuse me, that was unanimous, yes. Unanimously approved. Very good. Item 12B, please, Janelle.
12B, discuss and consider approval of the Seawolf Park Concept and approval from the park board to move forward with developing more specific plans.
Very good. We discussed this quite a bit at workshop today, and this is moving forward. I think there is a timeline that Vince, what is his last name?
Lorifus.
Lorifus. Vince Lorifus, excuse me, Vince, if you're watching this, I apologize. Vince Lorifus brought forward to us, I think, in March. He's going to bring back information if this is approved on moving forward with more input in how to develop Seawolf Park. I would entertain a motion from council.
I would move approval.
I'll second that.
A motion for approval, Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Schuster. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'll repeat what I said this morning after the discussion was, Vince's engagement in this and his process and the way he's been interacting with city staff, I think is very encouraging, the interaction we've been looking for all along. There may be some other issues around it, and it's going to be complex, but I think it's wise of us to empower him to move forward with looking for a plan, a way of implementation and bringing third parties into it as needed. Maybe somebody out there who says, oh, yeah, we can make it.
And I want to make myself clear on the motion. Who made that motion? I'm sorry.
I did, yes.
That is included in that, David, that we bring back a report in March to city council.
He said this one?
Yes. Okay. Yes.
And does that meet your approval, William?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Is bring back a report to us in March moving forward? Please cast your votes. Marie?
I know, I have a question.
Oh, go right ahead.
So, we're voting on the?
12D.
B as in boy.
B as in boy. You're welcome. And that is unanimous. Let's move to 12C, please.
12C, discuss and consider approval of the park board to move forward with a master developer for Stewart Park and to report back the progress at the February twenty-third city council meeting.
Very good. This was what, we discussed this this morning also, and I think Vince has mentioned also about bringing this back into council in March. So, I'd entertain a motion on this particular item.
I would like to likewise move approval of this item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilwoman Lewis, and the motion by Councilman Collins. Any discussion?
Again, same thing. They're going out, they're going to investigate, you know, and hopefully bring back a chair with the task force. He did mention that this morning, but should have a report back on the progress in February, March.
And is that in your motion, the March report?
Yes, for the March report.
All right. Please cast your votes. That is unanimously approved. Thank you. Item 12D, please, Janelle.
12D, consider for approval a resolution of the city council of the city of Galveston, Texas receiving the Galveston Park Board of Trustees 2022-2023 capital improvement plans for RA AFL Park, Stewart Beach, Seawolf Park, East End Lagoon, Seawall Urban Park, as well as coastal projects at Delanera Beach, Babes Beach, Seawall West End Breakwater, and beach renourishment projects along the Seawall and west of the Seawall, giving council approval, denial, or deferral of such projects, and providing for findings of fact and providing for an effective date.
Very good. I'm going to call on our park board liaison, Councilman Bouvier.
Okay. What I'd like to do is make a motion to approve based upon the recommendations from the city. So, what I'd like to do is just go down the list and tell you which one it is, if it's approved, deferred, or denied, and then we'll vote on it as a package. And if something's wrong, then we'll bring it back for a discussion. So, A, Stewart Beach concrete repair work.
Can I ask one question? One thing that I would like to change, and we might as well address it so we can vote for it as a block if you agree. It has to do with the Babes Beach B U D M restore, and it's an unspecified amount, and I would like to defer that till we have a number to it, which they're saying in their information, that project will be moving by mid-23, so I would like to defer that to March.
Which item is that?
Number seven, which has an unspecified amount.
I believe, I believe in our ordinance, that would be section four, R.
Four.
Item R.
R, yes.
Very last one.
May, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
In the ordinance, each item is listed, maybe it would be more beneficial to go one next, next, and next, and then, so everybody can be on the same page.
But we could put them in one motion? Correct.
You can put it in one motion, or you can ask to talk about each one individually, but if we're jumping back and forth, each one's item, I think it's confusing.
It is very confusing. Let's start, Councilman Bouvier, let's start with the first one.
Can I ask a question before we get into that? So, on some of these that are deferred, like staff has recommended deferral on some of these, is it park board that is going to bring that back to us? Is staff going to bring back to us something? What do we do with those?
Well, my plan is to bring, to discuss these as quick, since we're going to be working on the interlocal here pretty quick, is to bring them up here and try to bring clarity to you guys with the recommendations as quickly as possible.
So, city staff, we will initiate the discussions. Take this by the reins and bring it back to council.
That's our plan.
Okay.
With cooperation with park board closely. Yeah, I'm sure they will.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Mike, go right ahead.
Okay, so, do you want me to make the motion to approve and then do that, or?
Each one separate.
Do you want each one separate?
Well, that's what Donna is suggesting.
No, she.
She was suggesting to make it less confusing for, since I happen to have a question on the very left item that's confusing to the people, so if we do a motion for each thing, then it's a lot more transparent.
Fine with me. Mike, go right ahead.
I'm going to do a separate motion for each item.
That's what they said.
We don't have to do it that way. I only have.
I suggest, I think the road that Mikey seems to be headed down right now is approval of the entire package with per staff's recommendations, and then when we get to the bottom, if we want to add amendments to that motion, because you have a concern, I think, that sound like it.
Well, we could do that, or we could even do it like the consent items. As Councilman Bouvier moves forward, we could pull one out to vote on it individually, so.
Or we could start at the bottom and look right where the top.
You could do that, and then make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
With the exception of? We need to delineate what that is.
So, Councilman Bouvier wants to go through each item, A, B, C, and say whether you're recommending approval, deferral, or denial, then make your motion based on that.
So, what I'm asking, or what I want to do, is follow the staff's recommendation and just go down with what they had recommended, with the dates if they deferred it, and then when we get to R, we'll have some discussions, and then we'll vote on that one, and then hopefully that will be the whole package, and then we can vote.
That sounds good.
Okay, so, I'm just going to read the header and then whether approved, deferred, or denied. So, A, Stewart Beach concrete repair work for the amount of $200,000, have down here as approved, as we approved that earlier. The RA AFL Beach Drainage Project for the amount of $150,322, deferred until March. Beach Patrol Headquarters at Stewart Beach for $456,000, deferred till June. Seawolf Park USS Stewart Morning Project for the amount of $347,549 to be deferred February. Seawolf Park Fishing Pier Extension for the amount of $247,500, deferred till February. Seawolf Park Ship and Sub Bulkhead for the amount of $133,000, deferred till February. Contingency Seawolf Park Erosion Fill, $180,000, approved. Contingency Seawolf Park RV Park for $1.2 million, deferred. And I think that's deferred because we're taking a different approach at that, so it's deferred until we get those other steps done. I don't have a date on that. East End Lagoon Restore for $212,033, approved. Urban Park in the amount of $500,000, deferred till January. Delanera Beach Repair Harvey FEMA for $4,680,797, approved. Babes Beach Repair Harvey FEMA, $2.9 million, 601,909, approved. Engineering Design Permitting for Offshore Backwater, Breakwater, I'm sorry, Breakwater, approved. You. USA CE Beach Nourishment Permit Addendums, $250,000 approved. Engineering Design from Delanaire West Boundary to 13 Mile, $1.1 million approved. Engineering and Permitting for Emergency Ramps West of 61st deferred till February. Stewart Beach Vegetation Mitigation, $135,000 approved. And now we come to the discussion for Bates Beach Restore with an unspecified amount.
So I would like, I would request of council that we defer this to February or March because it's already been determined that the BUDM project will be going on Bates Beach. There isn't any reason by February or March we would have a specified amount. So if you're all--
Yeah, I think we just need to get, we need to get a funding amount and a funding source. I don't think council can approve a budget.
Right.
So can we defer until amount is provided?
Amount source, yeah. That's all we asked for.
Okay. So deferred until we see the amount?
Yep.
Okay.
May I ask staff one thing? These staff recommendations with approval, approval with conditions. Most of those conditions, correct me if I'm wrong, require that we meet with park board to fully understand project's scope and to, in most cases, guarantee that our coastal zone management is included in the discussion so that you have, that you fully understand. Are able to report to someone.
Absolutely correct.
So I'm--
I mean, will you make your motion?
Oh. Make a motion to approve as stated.
I'll second.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that? Now, does that go through all of those, Mike?
Yeah, that would make everything.
The only change was to item R, I mean, for R.
Yes, okay. We have a motion in a second on that. Please cast your votes. That is unanimously approved. Thank you, Mike. Looking through that. Appreciate that. All right, let's move to item 12E, please, Janelle.
12E, discuss and consider having the city manager initiate discussions with park board staff concerning a new interlocal agreement and report progress to council at their January council meeting.
I think everybody at council is kind of aware of this. I'm going to make a motion for approval of that. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Collins. Any discussion? Please cast your votes on that. That is unanimous. And we are moving now to 12F, please, Janelle.
12F, discuss and consider appointments to HDAC's 2023 Transportation Policy Council and Transportation Advisory Committee.
We had discussed this this morning and I think we had decided we're going to nominate Councilwoman Rob to be the primary representative for TPC. And the alternate would be Councilman Mustowski.
I'm second to that.
Very good. We have a motion in second. Any discussion?
I do know that--
You don't back out.
But the Transportation Advisory Committee--
That's staff. That is staff. We have staffers on that commission.
But that's not how this reads. So it should be for just the transportation policy because staff should do.
The motion is Transportation Policy Council, we just made. And then we'll come back for the Transportation Advisory Committee.
We'll have to do that one manually because I put them in as one.
Correct. So all those in favor of the nominations for TPC, Transportation Policy Council? That is unanimous. Congratulations. And Janelle will notify his GAC of that change. Now, nominations for Transportation Advisory Committee. Brian?
I think Rob's on that committee now.
Yes.
And he'll continue to serve in that role if it's your pleasure.
And Brandon Cook is the alternate.
Brandon Cook will remain as the alternate.
That is correct. All right, so we have a nomination. I'd like to nominate Rob Winnicky as the representative and Brandon Cook as the alternate for the Transportation Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rob. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And 12G, please.
12G, discuss and consider appointments to the following city boards, committees, and committees. One, Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Building Board of Adjustments, we have gotten word, Janelle informed me today, that we have a nomination and I'd like to nominate Shelby Gonzalez to the position on the Building Board of Adjustment that was recommended by Todd Sukka. And is there a second to that? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Council, we have gone through all the items in our agenda. It is 6:47. And I would like to wish everyone out there watching Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and a Happy New Year. Yes.
That's right. This is our last meeting of the year, last meeting for the holidays. I wish everybody happy holidays. I want you to keep in your thoughts, our first responders, but as well, our city staff, park board's staff, the sheriff's department, park staff. We have a lot of people who are still out there engaged straight on through the holidays.
And please do not drink and drive. Not drink and drive, Vince.
I'd like to wish everyone a very happy holiday as well. And also remember our people who serve the country that keep us free.
You're here. Very good. We are officially adjourned. Thank you, council.
Excuse me. All right, if anybody's still watching. It was a nice little dry run to see how it was going. So I won't be here for their next meeting in January. But in February, I'll be here, probably with a couple other guys, maybe make some statements. And right now, you know the deal. If you want change, you gotta go out and get it.